Call the order, Township of North Huntington Board Commissioners Special Meeting for Thursday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call, Manager Silka.
Commissioner Stumpf.
Here.
Commissioner Atwood.
Here.
Commissioner Blasco.
Here.
Commissioner Zona.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Goss.
Here.
Commissioner Hoggess.
Here. Can everyone please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they could sign a book at the podium. All right, let the record reflect, no residents input tonight. Work, session, discussion topics, Manager Silka.
Okay, thank you. My first topic today is the Act five thirty-seven special study. I did provide a memo to the board that NHGMA and KLH provided a completed Act five thirty-seven sewage facilities plan special study for upgrading the Yocagani Waste Water Treatment Plant. This plan has to be advertised for thirty days for public comment, and following the public comment, the commissioners have to take action on it. The executive summary was attached for review, and actually, Mike Brand Hoover from NHGMA is here today to answer any questions you may have, or to explain the study in a little bit more depth.
Good evening. Thanks, Jeff. So, the reason for the plan is, right now, our treatment facility is down in Turner Valley Road. We treat about twelve thousand five hundred homes in the township. That's the complete township. Half of our township, if you take Route thirty and split it in half, that half goes down to the Yoc treatment facility. The other one goes down to Route nine nine three, which is the regional facility that treats Irwin, North Irwin, Manor Borough, Penn Township, et cetera. So, the treatment facility itself was built in nineteen seventy, so it's about fifty years old, and it's getting a little long in the tooth. It's hard to find replacement parts also. It's becoming increasingly difficult to meet treatment limits. And we know here within the next, I think it's probably year, if I'm correct, that our new permit's gonna be coming up for renewal, and there's gonna be treatment limits that we're gonna have a difficult time meeting, so hence, that's the reason. The tanks are getting old, you know, the concrete's getting bad, and it's just, we can't find parts for all the equipment. So, that's why we need to repair and treat the plant. The facility itself treats three point three one million gallons per day, you know, that's our total township, and right now, it's sufficiently sized. So, even if there was a build out of the complete township, it would be big enough to treat the entire township. However, again, the facility just isn't meeting the limits. So, no recommendations are gonna be made in this five thirty-seven plan to increase the capacity of the plan itself. However, we're gonna be implementing some new treatments, and it's called an SBR Treatment System. And what that means, that is a sequential batch reaction, reactor, and what that does is, it does all the treatment in one tank. So, this is gonna have four tanks. Each tank will do a complete treatment process in itself, and then discharge into the Yoc River. We're gonna add a new lift station down there. We're gonna add a bar screen, also grit removal, which is a big problem for us in damaging equipment down there. Also, we're gonna get rid of the hypochlorate treatment system, which is putting basically concentrated Clorox or chlorine into the water and dispersing it into the Yoc River. We're gonna go to a UV disinfection system to eliminate that also for safety. We won't have to worry about having the chlorine any longer. And basically, that's it, but I'd be happy to go into more depth if you'd like, but that's really a high-level overview. Are there any questions for me? Okay, great. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, just administratively, I'll have the advertisement for public comment put in, advertise, and it'll be on the agenda for February.
All right.
Okay, the next item I have is a request from NHGMA to waive building permit fees for their Highland Terrace Pump Station. In the past, we've worked cooperatively with NHGMA. We've waived past building permits, and they've waived tap-in fees and their permits for whenever we put in public facilities into our parks and everything else, so it is, there is a past history of doing this.
Any board discussion?
I'll place it on the agenda for final approval. The next item on the agenda is the Westmoreland County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. I gave you the light reading of the entire plan as well as the executive summary. This is a plan for FEMA, and it is a requirement that we be a participant in this plan if we want to be able to access FEMA funds in the case of a disaster. It's a very lengthy plan involving most like, it's storm events, water funds. We were involved on, as I put on the memo, on every step of the planning between Gene Commandore, Ryan Fonzie, and myself. We were making sure we were present at the meetings. We put everything in that we needed. So, the last step of this is to have the municipality approval, and then that basically puts us on the list of an eligible community for hazardous mitigation funds. And actually, this is, this plan is gonna tie into the core issues that they're working on in long's run. That's one of the areas here, so if there's mitigation funding available for any of the recommendations, this will then make us eligible for those funds.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, I'll put that on the agenda for adoption. My next one is simply a information. McMahon Engineers, who is the parent of the tracer company that we use, they, instead of any type of gift or candy or flowers for the Christmas, they gave a donation to a hundred dollars for recreation funding. So, that's just a transmitted letter there. In talking to Director Miller, he's probably gonna use it to pay for some of the gift cards for the snowman contest for the year. So, it's a nice, and we'll write a letter acknowledging receipt and thank for this. The next item on the agenda is the county hauling update, originally for Assistant Manager Turley. He's, and it'll be with us tonight, but what I'll do is I can give you kind of the thumbnail sketch of where we see our contract one year into the process. We don't have to go through the start of it, which was bumpy to say the least. We had major service issues, major billing issues, major, major issues at every aspect. What we were able to see from probably the second quarter on of last year is gradual improvement. Collections have been more consistent, routes have been more consistent. We've had, we haven't been seeing the multiple street misses every week, every week. So, we are seeing, I mean, we're not, we're not a hundred percent, we're not where we wanna be yet. However, from where we started to where we are right now, it's been, it's been a great improvement, constant contact. And I think that's one thing we can say is, their administrative staff and president on down is very tuned into answering our emails, addressing our issues, going face-to-face with consumers. Now, that being said, on the service issue, what we've seen crop up in the last two months, especially December and January's been bad, is customer service. It seems when people call, they're not, I still feel they're being overwhelmed at the county level customer service. They're not getting their calls answered, so they're leaving voicemails. Voicemails aren't being returned. So, we're seeing, and then we're getting a lot of rudeness from these people, you know, that they've been treated rudely. We've been addressing it. We've been fining them under our contract, our little fines, and we've been documenting. And now, what we're seeing is billing is now, for some reason, became a major issue, not only for singles, but especially if you have multi-tenant areas. As tenants move in, move out, they're not clearing the ledgers and saying, okay, we have a delinquent for John Smith, but now that, you know, Tim, you know, Martin moved in, he starts fresh. Their bills come with an outstanding balance in late fees. So, there was one, you know, apartment that the manager called me. I said, well, memorialize your statements to me and get them to me. So, she got it to me, you know, five. She's been working for, you know, at least a month to try to get this resolved. I sent a letter, a little tersely worded, and it was all done by four o'clock that day, so they did get it up. So, they're responsive, but I still, we still feel that they're overwhelmed maybe administratively. And I'm hoping that this taking on our neighbor Hemfield doesn't, you know, exacerbate this. They've, you know, they've made their commitments. We're working on it, but we feel that we're a lot better than we were six months ago, especially on the service issues. Now, their drivers are a lot, are a little bit more, you know, they wreck more. They've run over things a little bit more than waste management did. But, you know, the way we look at it, they've taken care of it. They've, they've paid for it. They turned it into insurance. They broke our wall down here in our dumpster bay. The one guy went straight through and popped our block out. You know, they took care of it. So, I mean, it's, it might not be the most quality, and, you know, workforce quality issues, but they do take care of them, and we haven't had any wires down for a while. During the first time, we've had wires down almost daily, which with waste management, we haven't had, didn't have wires down for years. So, that's, you know, to be truthful, we're, you know, it's not where we want it to be, but I don't think we're at a crisis or panic mode where we were maybe at the first quarter, second quarter of last year. I'll answer any questions you may have, Eric.
Yes, I mean, I could see the improvement. I think there's still some issues out there. My biggest concern is that we're still dealing with issues with staff having to work on residents' issues and having staff time, you know, taken to do that, which I'm glad you guys do to get the issues addressed. Do you guys have any meetings planned with them in the future to kind of talk about his status, or do you guys meet, you know, every so frequently?
Actually, we were planning to meet with him this week, however, with Mike not being available. Yeah, we're coming, you know, we've come to the point now where we're now starting to see an uptick in the customer service issues. It's starting to cost staff time.
Okay, yeah, that's why I didn't wanna see is our staff utilizing our man-hours and time and frustration, dealing with issues that they need to handle on their end. So, obviously, if you're following up with them with a meeting, I think you can hopefully address some of those issues. Any other board questions or discussion?
Okay, I have a few other issues that came to us after the agenda went out. And first, and I'm gonna invite Paul to come up here, you know, help out if I need it. It's the Forest Drive Stormwater Improvement Project. You briefed on this a couple of months ago. We engaged Remington Vernick Engineers to do a design for us and a bid. That project was bid, and bids were received for that project on the twelfth. And we did have a low, we had sixteen bidders put in bids, which just shows where the construction firms are right now. That to have a public project with sixteen bidders is unheard of. And the bids range from a hundred and three thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars to two hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred dollars. So, we had a wide range of bids. We had cluster bids, and, you know, C D and A, C H and D Enterprises of New Stanton was the low bidder at a hundred and three thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars for the base bid, and a hundred twenty, one hundred seventy-six dollars for the alternate bid. Now, we needed to do an alternate bid because there's one section that we don't know what's underneath. We may have to go deeper than, you know, the grade that we're coming down from. So, instead of trying to stop the project and change the order, we did it as an alternate. So, if it booms, and it's all based on quantities. So, it's not that, you know, so we're gonna need to do more, more units of digging, more units of everything, so that is. The good part is, we budgeted a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for this project. So, our low bid, a hundred twenty, a hundred three thousand, which we've, which we're pretty confident that's gonna be the bid, is gonna come in significantly under budget. And what I'd like to do is, you know, recommend putting this on for action for the, for approval at the next meeting. We did have a very cooperative property owner who had a major sinkhole in his driveway, which turned out that we had to do a couple hundred feet of work to solve and get it out, so we, he was very cooperative with us. And as, this is gonna take five easements from, five property owners to make this work. So, Paul, do you wanna add anything, or?
Yeah, I don't really have too much to add. I guess I'm just here for more moral support than anything, but yeah, if you have any questions, I mean, I'm more than, more than happy to talk about it, but.
Do they have a possible timeline of what, if we have approval of when they would wanna get the work started?
It's more or less, once we would approve of it, it would be in their court. We'd estimate like a month, maybe, a couple of weeks, till they get the paperwork in place.
It's gonna be lead time on.
Materials, bond.
It's gonna start immediately. We'll give notice of Jesus since we get all the bonds in.
Sounds good.
Yep.
And Paul, how often will you be on site?
I'll, I'll be out there constantly while they're working.
Daily?
Not like full-time, like I would be, but yeah, daily.
Daily.
Mm-hmm. Yep, at least, at least once a day. It always depends on what they're doing, but yeah, I'll be out there frequently.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't need you.
Yeah.
The next issue came in from Brandon and Tracy Urban at three three, three one Culture Road. They're building a new house, and they're asking that we allow them to keep their current existing house up and occupied by their elderly father up until a time where it's, their other house is completed and be able to be occupied. And we did do this before in two thousand nineteen with Lewis and Denise Sella, which they wanna do the same thing, keep their primary residence on, build in front of it, and then tear it down. And what we did is, I did attach the memorandum of understanding that we had drawn up, and we've had them post a ten thousand dollar bond with us that if they don't tear it down within six months of the occupancy permit, we will tear the house down at the, with the ten thousand dollar bond. And that's, you know, that's the request that came in. The building inspector, you know, they said it can't be, the house can't be built within the right of ways. You know, we just have a zoning ordinance that does not allow two primary structures on a lot, which is very common.
Any questions on that?
Okay, I'll have that put on for the voting of approval. The next item I have is the two thousand twenty-one police vehicle purchases. What we do is, we go, we go through Co-Stars for all of our police, our police purchases, the major vehicles, which means they don't have to be bid. So, we're not bound by any bidding requirement because of the Co-Stars program. Now, we did check out three of the, you know, of the closest Co-Stars, Shorkey, Laurel Auto in Johnston, and TriStar. And we are going, the recommendation from the police department is to go with the Ford interceptors. Last year, Ford came out with the interceptor model and jacked it up like almost eight thousand dollars. So, Dodge came in very low with theirs and kind of came in with basically a loss leader, got everybody to buy Dodges last year. Well, now, they're within a couple hundred dollars of each other, but the Dodgers made some design flaws. We feel that the batteries, you change the battery, you gotta take the backseat completely apart, which makes, makes us go into a lot of our other electronics, makes it unfeasible to have a battery that we can't access on a normal basis. Can't go to, in the middle of shift, can't run up to Walmart or something, have them do a, do a battery out for us. And what I'm gonna recommend is, Laurel Auto Group is, out of Johnston, is three, thirty-three thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars for the Explorer, which they don't have on lot yet. Now, for roughly five hundred dollars more, Shorkey has the same vehicle for thirty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-nine. They have vehicles on the lot. What I'd like to recommend is that as Shorkey is a, you know, a township business, and, you know, the difference on the two vehicles is a thousand dollars that we would go and award it to Shorkey, and they have the cars on site, and they're local, so everything, everything else is is done, you know, right inside the township.
Both are Co-Stars.
Yeah, yeah, all these are Co-Stars, so that's, that's why the bidding is, we don't, we're not bound to take the lowest bidder.
Any board discussion?
Can we ask, can we ask Shorkey to match the lowest bid?
Sure. That's a point well taken. I mean, they wanna be a good neighbor.
Yeah, mathematically, that'll save us five hundred and four dollars per every vehicle that they purchase, because mathematically looking, Laurel has the lowest at thirty-three thousand two thirty-five. For the same vehicle, the Ford interceptor, Shorkey's offering thirty-three thousand seven thirty-nine, a difference of five oh four. Virginia, I think that's a great idea. Can we please ask Shorkey? I agree with that. Yeah.
I'm okay with asking, and I like to see us try to keep the business within the township if all possible with the dealerships locally. I know some years ago, we ran into issue with this because if we go to Shorkey and say, well, if you match Laurel Auto Group's price, well, maybe Laurel Auto Group's wanna lower their price again by another five hundred bucks to stay competitive. And I think it's a bad practice getting to, I'm all about going with the lowest bidder. I understand the manager's recommendation, maybe even the chief, you know, saying that the vehicles are on the lot and ready to go. I'm okay if, you know, if you guys wanna do that, but I'm not in favor of going and saying, hey, if you lower your price, I understand it's, will be saving us a thousand dollars. I think it's just a bad practice for the township to, once we receive bids, then go back out to place and say, well, if you wanna lower your bids, your competitor's five hundred bucks cheaper. I think it's just a bad look for us, but if that's a pleasure of the board, then by all means.
I would have to disagree with you, Zach. I'm looking to get the best deal on whatever opportunity we have. And I understand your concern. It isn't a valid one, but again, that's taxpayer dollars that, hey, if someone's willing to lower the price, we should be willing to save that money.
I'm a hundred percent on board, but only concern I would have then, what if Laurel Auto Group comes back and says, well, that price we gave you at thirty-three, two thirty-five is now thirty-two, five. Are we gonna switch our mind and go back to Shorkey and say, well, they lowered the price again? Like I said, that's fine. I'm okay with asking for the price, and I want us to save every, you know, penny we can. It's just, I think, a bad practice.
Again, if they keep bargaining left and right, you go for the lowest, lowest price, and that's how I've always done things. And it may not be what everyone likes to do, but it's worked out the best financially in my personal experience.
Well, Brian, if I heard you wrong, and I think I may have heard you wrong, but Zach was actually in favor of the lowest bidder. Is that what you thought you heard, or you thought otherwise?
I believe Zach wants the lowest bidder, which I agree with him, but he.
Okay.
That if I heard him correctly, even though Shorkey was not the lowest bidder, he didn't wanna jump between groups, back forth, back forth, as a picking one group when they've made an agreement on price. So, I'm still fair game to negotiate as far, as low as we can go, but.
If that's board's pleasure, if, Manager Silka, if you wanna reach out to Shorkey Group to see if they wanna match that price, I guess we can do that, if that's a board's pleasure.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. I'm all right with asking them. See if they can come down to that price. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I agree, because we can always tell Laurel Auto Group, this is what we had on the table in front of us. This was the way we decided to go.
You know, I see Zach's point. I really, really do, and it can turn into a slippery slope. We can look at the bid and say, look, this is the best that they offered, and they all knew it. They were in competi, did they know? Did these three auto complexes know that they were all in bid with each other?
What they do, they're all on, this is a state list.
Yeah.
So, everybody puts on, in their price to the list. It's not that, they don't know, they're in competition with everybody. They're in, I mean, we didn't reach out to Manheim, you know, Ford, which is another big one, or Dave Ford. You know, what we did is, we kind of took, you know, new ones. You know, Laurel's kind of new to the group, so we threw them in, because we, we used to get our cars put together in Johnston. They get all the striping, because that was the lowest price we got. So, we looked at those. We, there's, there's many more vendors in the state, but then you've got, do I drive out to Lancaster to bring a car back?
Right.
So, everybody puts in what their best bid is.
And the question is, is where are we gonna have the service done? If we purchase from Laurel, then are we gonna go to Shorkey Ford to have the service done?
Correct. Yeah, because it'd be Ford, it would be Ford warranty service. We could go to any dealer in the, in the area.
Yeah. I see where Zach, what Zach's saying, though. I mean, if everybody had the opportunity, and I'm, it sounds like I'm going back on what I said earlier. And for those that think that I am, I am. So, that's important, okay? I'm gonna own that one, so I am going back on my word. I shouldn't say going back on my word, going back on my thought process, so, but I understand what Zach is saying. It turns into a slippery slope. These three auto complexes knew that they were to submit their bid, the best bid, the best number. It is what it is. And I see where Zach has a very valid point, and I don't wanna do that, but I also understand Shorkey's right here in our backyard. But maybe Shorkey should have thought a little bit more about this bid, and maybe came in less, you know? Even though that they, none of them knew what each other was bidding. But, you know, there is a markup on all these values. There's no doubt people are, there is, you know, they're, they're getting, there is a markup. And I don't know. I'm gonna side with Zach on this one, okay, for the record. Sorry, Virginia.
The only other thing I'd like to add is, this isn't like it was a specific competitive bid for the township. Am I correct? It's, it's a, it's a value they put into this system.
What it is, it's a competitive bid for the state. That anybody in the state can go with a coast, that's a member of Co-Stars can go in, it's, you know, the state does the bidding, and they put everything together.
So, it's not like they answered one of our bid requests. That's why I think it's okay to go back.
Yeah, I'm okay with checking, too, with the price, but Jeff, I would have a question. Is there anything in Co-Stars that would prohibit that? I mean, do they have to, do they have to go by the price that they post in Co-Stars, or can they lower the price down?
That would be, I mean.
I think you can always lower it. You can't raise it.
I'm just wondering, for them to get into that Co-Stars program and, and post a price for vehicles across the state.
Yeah, let them raise it. If we can get it, with all due respect to everybody, why wouldn't you wanna save the money?
And I agree. I'm all for asking them. I'm just saying, is it possible for them to lower the price is what I'm, I guess that's my question.
Always lower, never higher.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, Jeff, I think you have some direction from the board, so if you wanna reach out to Shorkey Auto Group to see if they're comfortable matching Laurel Auto Group's price, then we could put that on for the agenda.
Okay. And that's all I have for this part of the meeting.
All righty. Planning and engineering topics, Director Fonzie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just one item of business to consider for approval next week. It is subdivision thirteen of two thousand twenty, the Mountain Ridge Estates Revision Seven. And this is on Whisperwood Court in Mountain Ridge Estates. And I'm having difficulty getting the, there it is. Okay, this particular, it's, it's two lots. The, the developer currently owns both. Huntington Development Company owns both lots. And this area goes back to the original subdivision in two thousand and five when this was created. This, this lot in particular, the yellow shaded lot, was slated for a four-unit townhouse at the very beginning. The market didn't agree with that, and those lots were never sold to build the townhouse. At one point in two thousand and sixteen, they came in front of the board at that time and had those four townhouse lots turned into two lots, excuse me, for single-family homes. Since then, they've also sat on the market, haven't sold. So, the developer wants to come and consolidate those two lots and finally make this one lot before you to make it more attractive to a buyer, potentially put a larger house on it, have a bigger yard. So, the resulting lot is zero point four four acres, pretty cut and dry. There is a pump station behind it. So, the rear setback is less than normal because of that parcel that has the pump station. So, that will also act as a buffer around this PRD. Again, pretty simple, two lots into one, and the developer owns them both, and he's looking to sell the one lot. Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Thank you. All business, Manager Silka.
Okay, just real quick on backyard chickens. I just did an update on the process from the December meeting for the zoning ordinance amendment to meet all the guidelines of the municipal planning code where the plant, the municipal planning commission and the Westmoreland Planning Commission have to have the proposed amendment at least thirty days prior to the public hearing. They, those were sent out, and the public hearing will be on February eleventh at six PM, which is before our next work session. So, that is why it's not on this meeting, because we couldn't meet the deadlines of thirty days. And I did provide, as I got this week, the Westmoreland County Planning, their proposed comments, which are for your use, and they'll be, they'll become part of the record at the hearing.
Right.
And that's all I wanna discuss on chickens on my end.
All right, any, anything from the board on that? All right, any further board comments?
Yes, please. Okay, for everybody that's listening, everybody out in TV land, good evening to everybody. Happy New Year to all. So, I would like to discuss the CARES Act grant for thirty thousand dollars. That found itself twice in the Tribune Live, but allow me to say this. Township manager Jeffrey Silka informed the seven township commissioners that on twenty-eight December two thousand twenty, that Jeff Silka picked up the. December 2020, that Jeff Silk picked up the $30,000 County CARES Act check. Jeff, is that true?
That is true.
So now we have $30,000 for the CARES Act. Okay. The CARES Act, for anybody that wants to know what it is, the CARES Act provides assistance for state, local, and tribal governments through the Corona Relief Fund. The CARES Act provides payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of the COVID-19 outbreak. The CARES Act established the $150 billion Corona Relief Fund. Now, that's the history of it. And again, this township did receive that check for $30,000 on 28 December 2020. Now, here's my gripe. The editorial in the Tribune Review Live on December 19th stated that North Huntington hurts, when it says North Huntington hurts, it's, they're talking about this township, this commissioner, these commissioners, this board, hurts its residents by defying state COVID mandates. That is not true. Gina Sorelli stated that we committed no violations a week after our December meeting. We, and remember, we got the check for $30,000 on 28 December. Then there was another article posted on December 17th, and strangely enough, on the Trib Live, that article comes out again today, the same article. It was written just under 30 days ago, again. It said, "We did not violate public health guidelines regarding our past meeting, nor did we defy state public health mandates." Okay, why am I saying that? Because we got the check for $30,000 on 28 December, and we would have had it sooner, right? Jeff, do you want to tell us what happened?
Correct. We had the documents signed at the end of the 17, at the meeting on the 17th, they were put in the mail the next day. They were delivered, I believe, last week. Our application got lost in the mail. So Commissioner Zona called, he was talking to Commissioner Chu, and I was able to make a, make a copy of our, copy of the application, scan it down to the county, and then within, you know, an hour, I was told to come down and pick up the check.
Ron, do you want to add to that? Is there anything you'd like to say to that?
No, that's, that's what happened, and I, just to add on to what you're saying, I agree with you, and it's very irresponsible.
Yes.
Everything I've read was irresponsible, saying how we are not following the mandates. We have social distancing, we have it here today, we have it up here at the head table, we always have for the past year. We followed all the mandates, and for articles to be written, and for, I mean, I've read things in the paper where so-called, if they are, I don't know, residents of the township are happy that we weren't gonna get the money when they thought we weren't gonna get it. They were happy that we weren't gonna get it. I kind of find that irresponsible.
Yes.
But again, just to confirm what you're saying, we followed guidelines all along, we are following them tonight, everybody is social distance here, and up here at the head table, too, so I don't see what the issue was.
I agree. So when I read the article from the Trib Live from the 17th December 2020, and then reread it again today, to my chagrin and surprise, the same article, just a little under 30 days later, for 14 January, two names pop up, two folks that claim that the residents of this township, of this, of this township, wanted Mr. Doug Chu to rescind the $30,000, punish the, punish, how many residents do we have in North Huntington Township?
About 31,000.
About 31,000. So two people in this article, and you can check the article out for yourself, wanted Doug Chu to reject and take back the $30,000 that was given to us under the CARES Act, wanted to make the seven commissioners look bad, but I can't believe two people in this township would want to make 31,000 people suffer when the seven board commissioners knew exactly what we were doing, were not politicizing. If anybody's politicizing, it might be the two folks that wrote in on that article that are trying to grandstand for whatever cause that they may have. We knew what we were doing in the beginning, we know what is constitutional, unconstitutional, we followed the guidelines and the mandates, and the next time anybody starts sending out misinformation, you better think twice about it, because you're stirring the pot and you're creating problems. And this stuff has got to stop, and you wonder why there's no unity in this country, because you got people that want to stir the pot. I'm telling you to stop it, because it's not true. We did everything according to the Constitution. Gina Sorelli even admits that we committed no violations, and we got the $30,000 on 28 December. End of story. We win.
Eric, I'd just like to add to that, that North Huntington never took a vote on anything. There were some comments made, there were people's personal opinions, and if we were voting on that, I'm sure I can say that there would not have been any unanimous vote on that.
Well, I would like to say a few words as well. The people that wrote those, I'm not even sure they ever appeared personally at a meeting. So I don't know how that they can be credible, for one thing. And the other thing is, I think that there's carelessness on the part of the editor of the paper, in, because, well, on the opinion page, anyway, Lori, whatever her name is. I think that really that was careless on the part of her, on, on her part, not to check it out before these were published. I have never seen her at one of our meetings either, so I don't know how that she could set herself up as the credible person in this whole issue. And so I would just like to say that maybe the paper needs to check out things before they publish them. You can't just, you can't just publish anything you want to and set fires under people.
Bingo.
That's not the way to go.
Right. That divides everybody, and it stirs the pot. So I had my wife look up these two residents, so-called residents, on Facebook. Guess what? We can't find them. Now, everybody, almost everybody I know is on Facebook, I don't know why. I'm not on it, I don't care to be on it, I'm not gonna be on it. You got my telephone number, if you want to call me, call me. You guys know that I'm an accessible commissioner, more than happy to serve, love to serve the people, love to serve the nation. But strangely enough, these two residents, alleged residents, don't even show up on Facebook, can't even find them. So who are they? But I'm gonna tell you, whoever they are, they had no problem trying to stir the pot and create dissension. Shame on you for doing that. I really am honest to God, I mean that. Shame on you for trying to stir the pot, when you're talking about things you don't even know, and all you want to do is stir the pot. I hope you learn better.
We can call this fake news.
If I can just, one more thing, and I agree with you, Fran, that I don't think those people that wrote that stuff were in this room, and if anybody's watching on, online, you can't see how many people are in this room, you can't see if they're social distanced. So for anybody to say that is irresponsible, and it's, it's not only irresponsible, it's a lie.
Right.
For them to say that we did not follow the mandates is a lie. If anybody wants to watch, you can see us up here, we're social distanced, you can't see people in there. So that's a lie. And I take umbrage also that, when that article was written, there was a reporter from the Tribune Review sitting in that back corner, and he knows what we did here, and that article was still published in his newspaper, when he was sitting in this room, and he knows that we followed the mandates. And I would ask, and I'm sure that they're watching on TV, because they get quotes from us when they're not in here, I would ask today that they retract that story and they print a new story saying they were wrong, because they were wrong. Not only is it fake news, it's a flat-out lie. It is a lie, period. And I would call on the Tribune Review to correct that story, and to retract what they said.
And apology is in order.
And you really can't blame a citizen who is reading that article that is wrong and then gets upset over it. The whole thing boils back to that article that was wrong.
I'm a firm believer, and we've always been taught, Ron's been with the state police, I've been with the military. Ron, how many years?
31.
Are you allowed to make comments on things you don't know?
I can, but I like to say that I follow facts and I follow evidence, that's what I do. I don't open my mouth unless I have the facts.
Well, 25 years in defending this nation, if I get taught saying something to somebody that is not true, I have sunk my career, I'm done. That same thing, if I make a statement that gets soldiers killed, I'm done. Then I gotta live with the fact that I've had, killed my soldiers because I put out false information. I come from a world where if you don't know what you're talking about, you keep it zipped. Stat de zee, eh? Yeah. That's my point. If you don't know what you're talking about, please, for God's sake, don't say it. Don't stir the pot. We don't need any more of this pot stirring in this nation right now. We need unity, and you can't have unity if you got people flagrantly outlying. It's gotta stop. And one day, I hope they pass a law that it says, man, if you bear false witness on somebody, if I'm not mistaken, that is on the ninth commandment of our dear Lord, that you're gonna be in serious crap, because you should be, because all you're trying to do is incite riot, and there ought to be a penalty for that. That's all I gotta say.
All right, I guess everyone said their piece, so I'll say mine a little bit. I was one of the major ones to push to keep our meetings open and public, and first reason is, the meeting I think that was in question, we had one resident come up here, talk about some flooding issues, we had a few other people call in. We're more than access for people that are uncomfortable with, they can not come in, they can call, send their emails or comments to Jeff or any commissioner to be addressed. The other reason was the P.A. Sunsign Law Act, which requires all meetings to be open and public, be broadcast when the meetings are to be conducted, and residents have the open capability to comment on anything at the meeting and hold a public comment. Act 15 of 2020, the state legislator gave permission of local government agencies to hold virtual remote meetings via Skype, other forms, but there still has to be a quorum required, and it has to be public knowledge that meetings are being conducted via virtually. It was my opinion, I think it was board's pleasure, Virginia, you are correct, we didn't take a vote, but I think there was, the majority of the board said we still want to hold open and public meetings. But with that, and on Act 15, it says, "To the extent of the agency items can be delayed and person meetings should be done." So basically, the state legislator tells us, with that being said at the end there, that they would much rather you have open meetings and have conducted business and open where a public can come. So obviously, I, I felt that we did the right thing. Obviously, I think some people thought the board was trying to grandstand or make a political statement, that was not my intent at all, might have been some board members, but we're here to serve the community, and that's what we did, following past state law, as far as the P.A. Sunsign Law Act. Obviously, we could have done what other communities have done with doing virtual meetings, but to me, having the access of people that want to come in public and come, or if they want to do something virtually or call in, they can do so as well. And I, going, I guess, my own opinion about our personal freedoms or liberties, I, I think, you know, was it Ben Franklin said that those who are willing to give up essential liberties, deserve, you know, to purchase a little bit of temporary safety, don't deserve liberty or safety, and I think that's kind of the road that we were going down, fall sense of security, and then we're giving up our liberties. I think that for this township to have open and public meetings is a liberty that we have here in our country, and when the mandates did come down by the governor, the governor doesn't have the authority to mandate a local government how they conduct business, it's a state legislator. So the state legislator did not come down with those mandates, it was the governor. So therefore, the governor's orders were not superseded by the state legislator, so those orders weren't to be followed unless we chose to be followed by us at the board here.
One last thing there, too, Zach. There's, we're being told we can only have so many people in this room, but at the same time, the General Assembly of Pennsylvania has 253 members, they're all, they're all in session up there, they were all just up there being sworn in in their chambers, and nobody had a problem with that. 253 members in there, but we had 11 people in this room, and it seemed to be an issue, so, just a lot of hypocritical people that are opening their mouth.
Any other further board comments for tonight?
I do have something on a, on a different note. Regarding the budget for next year, I was gonna ask if we could get started on that sooner rather than later. You know, maybe we can get a preliminary budget here in a few months and kind of build it up that way, so we have plenty of time to make sure there's, it's balanced, or fits our needs.
Our plan is in March to have a work, a special workshop dedicated to starting the budget process. Is that early enough? Okay, yeah, you'll see, every department is going to produce, is going to present their strategic plan, their strategic needs, their capital needs, and then we'll, that'll start the process to work through for the budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, it is a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor by State and I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero, meeting adjourned at 7:44. Executive session to follow to talk about board appointments.